Good morning and welcome back to the Select Committee on Victoria Planning Provision Amendments, VC 257, 267 and 274. We're going to move into a session now with the Committee for Economic Development of Australia and the Centre for Independent Studies. Can I just firstly just note to the witnesses that all evidence today is protected by parliamentary privilege as provided by the Constitution Act 1975 and provisions of the Legislative Council Standing Orders. Therefore, the information you provide during the hearing is protected by law. You are protected against any action for what you say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same things, those commitments may not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberately false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered as a contempt of parliament. All evidence is being recorded. You will be provided with a proof version of the transcript following the hearing, and transcripts will ultimately be made public and posted on the committee's website. For the handout record, can you please state your names and any organisations you're appearing on behalf of, please?
I'm James Brooks and I'm appearing on behalf of the Committee for Economic Development of Australia.
And I'm Peter Chulup, I'm Chief Economist at the Centre for Independent Studies.
Welcome and look, thank you very much for appearing on what I know is very short notice. Could I ask each of you to make a short statement, between five and 10 minutes, preferably at the five-minute end? We'd love to get some time for questions, so...
Shall Peter start?
Peter, would you like to kick off?
Sure, sure. So just as background, in my career I've published a number of academic research papers on Australian housing policy and focusing on the importance of planning restrictions, which is a topic that is at the heart of this inquiry, so my opening remarks will focus on that. The legislative changes examined by this committee intended to allow more building, which will increase supply and make housing more affordable. A large body of research supports this policy. Specifically, it identifies planning restrictions as a major reason housing is so expensive in cities like Melbourne. The legislative amendments are a clear and direct expression of this research. They'll make housing in Melbourne more affordable, and so they should be supported. As an example of this research, the New South Wales Productivity Commission estimates that height restrictions raise the price of Melbourne apartments by 19% or $128,000. And that's an estimate in line with a wide range of other evidence. As another example, sorry, and I asked the Secretary if they could circulate a handout, which I hope you have in front of you.
Oh yes, we have those, thank you.
The top chart in that handout shows planning permits in Auckland, which is one of the clearest and most interesting examples of planning reform. In 2016, Auckland allowed higher density building in about three-quarters of its residential land, and as shown by the red dashed line in the chart, construction in those areas soared. Meanwhile, in the areas that weren't rezoned, which is shown by the blue line, construction remained flat. And the chart below shows the effect that that had on rent. Over the same period that high density housing was booming, rents in Auckland, which is shown by the blue line, were fairly flat, even though they were rising very quickly in the rest of New Zealand, shown by the green line. And formal statistical modelling of these relationships estimates that the rezoning reduced rent in Auckland by 28% relative to other New Zealand cities. What's especially interesting is the is the blue line, which shows rents for tenants on low incomes who benefited the most. And again, these results are in line with a large body of other research. Now, I'm aware that some submissions to this inquiry dispute this evidence. For example, Charter 29 says that rezoning won't make housing affordable. I think claims like that should be viewed the same way we view the critics of research on climate change, or vaccination, or the health effects of tobacco. This supply denialism is a fringe position, not supported by the evidence. Countless studies find a large effect of planning restrictions on housing affordability, and I've actually helped write several of those. In the CIS submission, we list over a dozen surveys of the research, all of which come to similar conclusions. And I'll quote just one of those by Emily Hamilton of George Mason University, quote, "There is a strong consensus among economists that land use regulations are standing in the way of new housing construction and are causing high and rising prices." Unquote. The criticisms, such as those of Charter 29, I think are just simple misunderstandings that are not taken seriously by people who've looked closely at the data. For example, they're not even discussed in the surveys I just mentioned. Let me address one objection because it relates to my earlier comments. So Charter 29 says that what works in Auckland won't work in Melbourne, apparently because of differences in tax or banking or something. That argument does not logically follow. But maybe more importantly, Auckland isn't unique. We've seen planning liberalisation deliver more affordable housing in Zurich, Lower Hut, Minneapolis, Edmonton, Tokyo, Houston, Sao Paulo and many other cities. We give citations for each of those cities in the CIS submission. Now, I guess if used logically possible that planning liberalisation works in all of those other cities but not in Melbourne, that I think you'd need to see compelling argument for that before basing policy on it.
Peter Chulup, I'm going to ask you to wind up your comments if you could, we've got a lot of questions as well.
Sure. Just in the previous session, there were some questions about requiring affordable housing, which often called mandatory inclusionary zoning. There's research on that, and we discussed it in our submission. So just in very brief, that research says that the policy is well-meaning but counterproductive. It's a tax on development and reduces supply, and we can do with that in the Q and A session, but the leapfrog of the research is that it hurts more than it helps. And I'm happy to turn to questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brooks.
Okay, good morning, council members. So I'm here to give evidence today on the impacts of the broader economics of what's being considered and maybe through a mechanism which has not been considered yet, which is through the productivity of the construction sector. Firstly, where I'm coming from is CEDA, a think tank made up of over 400 corporate, government and non-profit members, founded in 1960 as a body which would bring economists, business and community leaders together with policymakers to champion economic reforms. Over 60 years, CEDA has championed nationally significant policy reforms across immigration, tax, water and even broadband issues, and it's in that spirit which I'm presenting to you today to urge you to stay the course on these proposed planning reforms. We consistently hear from our over 400 members that housing is the most significant national challenge which we have. At its most perverse, expensive and scarce housing is increasing homelessness, and in a wealthy country like Australia, this is obviously unacceptable, but beyond this, it's forcing young people out of Melbourne, giving aspirational homeowners fewer choices, renters less bargaining power, and in aggregate, it's holding our economy back. I'm visiting Melbourne for this inquiry, and nearly everyone I've spoken to is in some way on the wrong side of a bad deal in this housing market. But of course, not everyone is on this bad side of this deal. John Howard famously said that no one ever stopped him in the street to complain about the value of their house increasing. Landowners have seen extraordinary increases in the value of their property, and evidence shows that those who own land in our most valuable locations also have the largest incentives to block development. Objections like this continue to strangle housing supply. Committee members, chart one in your pack. Australia has failed to build housing in line with population growth. Chart two. Melbourne's population is falling within its most valuable, well-serviced middle-ring suburbs. It's worth mentioning here that much touted cutting immigration firstly robs future Australians of opportunity but will not address the fundamental problem. Over time, it is taking us more resources to build fewer and fewer houses. The complicated and uncertain set, a system of approvals which is endemic to the current planning system, is contributing to poor productivity in the construction sector. Committee members, chart three. CEDA chart highlighting construction workers required to build a house 1970 to 2023. Chart four is a final look at this by the Productivity Commission, looking at the hours required to build a single house 1990 to now. You will undoubtedly see that it's becoming harder over time to build houses. This inquiry will also undoubtedly hear a sea of calls to progress these reforms, as the evidence suggests that increasing the permissibility of zoning, much like Peter Chulup has referred to, will improve housing affordability. A quick run-through. In 2011, the Grattan Institute demonstrated that the type of housing being developed in Melbourne was not matching residents' preferences. In 2018, Peter Chulup and Ross Kendall demonstrated the high cost zoning was adding to our developed housing. In 2023, Infrastructure Victoria demonstrated Melbourne was still not providing the housing choices people wanted. Further in that year, they demonstrated the merits of higher residential densities by modelling different scenarios on how we build our city, and found the greatest economic gain with least traffic congestion and least carbon emissions was under a compact city scenario. In 2024, YIMBY Melbourne demonstrated that the demand for housing was highest in our affluent inner-city councils, which were not approving enough housing relative to other councils. In this same year, my colleague Danica Adams co-authored an article calling for the better use of existing land through planning reforms to address the high cost of housing. Subsequently, Australians who were polled on these reforms by Amplify found upzoning proposed by YIMBY Melbourne the second most compelling set of housing reforms, with CEDA's proposed increased densities fifth. These were only behind the greater adoption of prefabricated housing, mentioned in previous evidence, which to achieve scale requires the type of planning reform which this inquiry is considering. Of the policies that Australians considered, there was consensus the regulation of land needed to change to allow more housing. That is chart five in your pack. We may consider this the Australian community stopping us in the street to say housing has become too expensive. And housing has become expensive partly because it has become difficult to build. Findings from our forthcoming research and research already published by the Productivity Commission shows that Australia, like many other countries, is becoming less productive at constructing. Many Australians benefited from the housing market, which is at the start of Graph III, when housing was relatively more abundant and affordable. At this time, a typical three-story block of apartments would require an application which was merely a few pages long. Today, an equivalent building would require dozens of consultants conducting extensive review, generating hundreds of pages of reports. Constructors invest significant time in understanding and complying with different codes and regulations, and Melbourne's current planning system allows for significant differences across local government's areas. The proposed reforms would harmonise much of this. Emerging research suggests the current specificity and complexity incentivises firms to remain small, and this is important because construction firms which grow and scale are more productive, meaning they can build more homes with fewer resources. That's charts six and seven in your pack. Today, more workers are working in relatively smaller firms completing relatively fewer homes than at the time when construction productivity was higher. Critics of the proposed reforms want a system which maintains local scrutiny of development, and as our current market shows, this system cannot productively deliver housing. I'll end my comments by saying that a city like Melbourne, already the largest and most sparse in the world, endowed with space and industrious people from all corners of the globe, should not succumb to a dysfunctional housing market. The first step in amending this would be to follow the path on the reforms considered in front of you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate both of your submissions. We're going to have about three minutes per person to get through, so we'll have to keep things very tight, and I'd ask witnesses to keep their answers succinct if they could, please. And I've messed up the timeline, never mind. Could I ask you, Mr. Brooks, in terms of the sort of economics that you've been putting forward, I think that's interesting, and I think everyone here agrees that we need more housing, but I don't think that's really in dispute. Probably what this inquiry is trying to focus on is actually the specific amendments. Do you have any evidence that these amendments will in fact significantly reduce the cost of construction and the actual process, the timing processes? Because obviously we've had evidence to the contrary on that one.
So the mechanisms by which we reduce construction through land use and zoning are still being studied, and the clearest thing to look at would be Auckland, as Peter Chulup mentioned. So the evidence is crystal clear that the rezoning and more permissibility lowers housing prices and housing rents. This can only come from a few places, whether it's from the price of land or, as you mentioned, the price of construction. So what we see internationally in the US is jurisdictions which have less stringent and more relaxed land use and zoning have more productive firms, construction firms. This means by definition, they are producing more housing with less inputs. So this would be evidence to suggest that the cost of what they're constructing is cheaper in these jurisdictions. Now, I don't want to give you a like-for-like basis, because if a developer builds something really large but really high value add, then that's going to have a higher cost. But what we see is that productivity is associated with reduced and less stringent land use regulations, even within Australia in times gone past.
And do you think that that would actually result in more affordable housing as opposed to just housing? Because I'm seeing a lot of housing, but not necessarily much of it's affordable. And again, I'd like to bring you back to the specific regulatory instruments that we're considering.
Yes, it would produce more affordable housing.
How?
Through through the mechanism I would be here to discuss is through the productivity in the construction sector. So through more effectively using the inputs, so materials, labour, through achieving better scale, think of the developers who duplicate process, achieving scale in the sector, we produce more homes for less costs. This will, as international evidence shows, flow through to the price and rents of housing the same way more supply of any good flows through to the price of that good.
Sorry, I've probably been over probably slightly in terms of being too vague. If we say affordable in terms of a specific provision designed for low-income earners...
Yes.
I understand what you're saying about potentially per meter cost.
Yes.
Is there anything in here that will address that specific need for affordable housing rather than just slightly cheaper potentially housing?
Within my submission or within the evidence more...
In terms of what's... Yeah, in terms of your understanding, and as an expert witness here today.
Absolutely. The mechanism of filtering, which is what we would describe as how new supply lowers the price and rents of existing housing, is very well established. So I think what you're getting at is provision and policies on the regulation of new development to permanently fix that affordable housing.
Concessionally, yes.
Yes. I believe Peter touched on one of the existing policies here, well-intentioned but to provide market-subsidised housing, which is merely shifting where the resources and cost comes from. So a policy like inclusionary zoning is just shifting the cost on the burden of new development and ultimately homeowners. So this is well-intentioned but does reduce development. Through the mechanisms of filtering, we see market prices reduce with new supply entering the market, and this in turn should be totally appropriate to deliver more affordable housing.
Terrific, thank you so much. And Mr. Davis?
I'm going to take you, sir, to your chart three and dwelling units completed per construction worker. You've imputed this as the cause of this decline as planning issues, I think.
One of.
Well, I think one of is my point. This would be more likely to be looked at as industrial relations issues, actually. When I look at this, I would suggest to you that that's more to do with industrial relations than it is with planning changes.
So I mean, in the creation of this chart, I haven't overlaid industrial relations, but I think if I were, you would see something, a simple measure like days lost of productive work.
Could just be more cost per worker.
Wages in the construction sector of labour input costs have broadly tracked the growth of wages in Australia generally. So we can't see, this is firstly a national chart, but when the Productivity Commission have looked at this... When the Productivity Commission looked at this previously, they could not find an association with increased industrial relations action and home building.
I would suggest this is a slightly dishonest chart. And actually, there's little to connect this to planning changes.
I would also suggest there's little to connect this to industrial relation changes, and the CFMU also operate on different densities to what we produce in Melbourne. But I'm happy to take this back and maybe produce more evidence.
I think it's a little bit dishonest. The second thing I'd ask you, I think it is a little dishonest to hook that to planning when there's no real connection of those changes to planning. If I was to pick something as top-of-line, I'd suggest it'd be industrial relations, but I too can't precisely connect those.
That's okay, I'm happy to take this, and maybe I can return and do some further data analysis.
Now, I just want to ask you about some of the large zones around the city. For example, the Maribyrnong site, the 128 hectare Commonwealth Government-owned land that is sitting idle because the Commonwealth Government has left that polluted. So a big chunk of land like that, would bringing land like that on, cleaning it and bringing it on to the market help lower prices?
One site in isolation is probably not where I can best give you evidence today.
I'm picking that as an example.
We should probably talk about the system of reforms before us as opposed to common policy.
So let me pick another area, Pick Fisherman's, being my colleague referred to earlier. A site where early plans suggested up to 80,000 people could be accommodated. If that was brought forward and planning permits were given for that, would that help lower prices?
In very general terms, the supply of land and permits will help lower prices. There is consideration to all the things that make development feasibility. I believe previous evidence was relating to infrastructure perhaps as well. Where I can best give you evidence is on the mechanisms I've outlined above through productivity in the construction sector.
So subject to...
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Watt? Oh, Mr. Berger, sorry.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Peter and James, for your submissions this morning. James, I might just go back to some of the comments you made about dysfunctional housing market. Can you just walk me through what that means?
To me, as you know, a normative statement, the dysfunctional housing market really relates to the continuing increase in rents, increase in prices and the effects it's having on Melbourne as a city.
So would it then follow that the revocation of these amendments would contribute significantly to the more functionality issues?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good. Now, Peter, in terms of the research that you've undertaken, I'm interested to hear a bit more about the supply denialists, what that all, what goes on with that.
Yeah, so, and this overlaps with your previous question about the dysfunction of Australian housing markets. We don't allow enough building. There's too little supply for the demand for housing, and that pushes up the price. In fact, that's the reason that housing in Australian cities is so expensive. There are a bunch of people that don't believe that supply and demand work in the housing market the way they do in most other markets, and I think you heard from Charter 29 as an example of one of these supply denialists. There's just a huge amount of evidence that contradicts these people, that we know supply and demand work in the housing market very strongly, very clearly, very quickly. And the CIS submission goes through a lot of that evidence. We see it everywhere. Auckland, I mentioned, the other cities I mentioned, in all of these places, if you liberalise zoning restrictions, it makes housing more affordable.
So with the housing shortages, not only throughout Australia but with Victoria as well, you know, if we keep putting pressure on rent and house prices, again, if these amendments are revoked, don't we miss out on reaching those targets?
Yes, I mean, that's, that should be at the centre of the debate.
And then it would follow from there, that where should the homes then go?
Good question. The people opposing this should be suggesting where they're going to be allowing us to build.
Sorry, Chair, I missed all of that.
Yeah, sorry. Could you say that again, please, Mr. Chulup? Bit of order, please.
I think that's a very good point. The people that are opposing these amendments really need to say where we're going to get the extra housing from.
So people that...
Can I suggest that wasn't actually a question to the members?
So if that follows, then if you're signalling at one specific place, how you deal with the number in totality?
One particular place won't have a big effect on housing supply or prices, but it's an example of what needs to be done throughout Melbourne. We need to allow more building everywhere, and that will increase supply and improve affordability.
Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Menzio.
Thank you, and thank you for appearing today. Just to go back to, I think, what Mr. Edishank was saying earlier, I think there's broad agreement that we all want to see more affordable housing delivered, and more densification, you know, is a good way to achieve that. I guess with respect to the specific amendments before us, I'd be interested in your views on, you know, whether these are the right instruments to deliver that additional supply and in particular deliver that affordable supply that we need, particularly for low and very low income earners.
I think these instruments are based on what we've seen internationally, what we understand of housing markets which do see rents fall. These are very consistent with what we'd expect to see, to see more housing affordability or more supply leading to housing affordability in the Melbourne market. I think these do a very good job and go a long way to addressing some of the key aspects of the regulation language withhold development, such as the uncertainty, third-party appeals, et cetera. I think these are very good.
Okay.
Can I add to that? Where it is most desirable to put extra housing is near your transport, public transport centres. The public, I mean, these are already lively, busy places, so you don't have the change in neighbourhood character that upsets people elsewhere. It reduces, it minimises the effect on traffic. For planners have been arguing for transport-oriented development for a long, long time, and some of these amendments go directly to that, locating the housing where it's most desirable. The other big, one of the other big amendments before you is for townhouses and allowing medium-density housing as a bright. Again, that's worked very successfully overseas, in Auckland in particular. It's a good way of increasing supply, and again, extra supply improves affordability.
And we've heard criticism, particularly of VC 267, so that's the new res code changes that will, that are, you know, related to that townhouse planning scheme amendment you've just referred to. There've been a number of criticisms about how that's been put together and some of the exemptions within that planning scheme amendment, the impact on ESD, vegetation, tree canopy. Do you have any views on that and whether, you know, we should be looking to improve, at the very least improve, VC 267?
I think the most important thing to say is, and this was a discussion in the previous session about the 70-30 spread between greenfields and infill, that if you don't put extra density in the inner suburbs, you'll have greenfields development and wipe out lots of trees and the environment, and it's terrible for the environment. You encourage car use, you encourage urban sprawl, you substantially reduce the green, the vegetation around the city.
I guess with VC, sorry to interrupt, but VC 267 applies statewide, not just to those inner areas.
Yeah, but the main effect will be to increase density where in, where housing already is, and replacing detached houses with medium-density housing.
We have to leave it there, thank you so much. Ms. Crozier.
Thank you, Chair, thank you both for appearing before the committee this morning. Mr. Brooks, I think you said you're not from Melbourne, are you Sydney or New South Wales based or Victoria?
I've been in Melbourne for five years and recently relocated to Sonny Adelaide.
Right, lucky you, Mr. Mallon, who's got sort of poached shoes along with others. You talked about new supply will decrease price. What about demand? You haven't spoken about demand, and you've put these figures in the context of Australia, not particularly relevant to Victoria per se, but there's no discussion around what has been really highlighted over frankly the recent weeks around immigration rates, a million people coming to the country in the last two years. Surely that puts demand on the system? And why have you not... And why have you not included those pressures that are causing largely this crisis? And what modelling has your organisation done in relation to this really pertinent issue that has, you know, been failed to be addressed?
Well, to put it simply, it's simply not our view that immigration is the cause in this crisis and the.
So, the immigration is not causing a demand?
The clearest thing to see here is the slowdown in productivity. So, with fewer homes built with more people, it doesn't matter how many immigrants are within or outside of the country, it's just, we're simply not going to build enough homes. The other thing to add is that for every immigrant that is able to come into Australia, they add to our labour pool in general.
I'm not disputing any of that, but the point is the supply and demand issue. When you've got enormous numbers like this coming into our country and our state, of course, there's going to be pressures on the numbers of housing and our ability to keep up with that demand, that's my point. Do you agree?
I don't agree with your point, and I would simply put it that the.
That's extraordinary.
The policy response would of course be.
So, there's no demand pressures, no demand pressures whatsoever?
It's not within the evidence of my submission.
No, because you.
Mr. Chulip is busting to get in.
Well, I'm actually asking Mr. Brooks, I don't want to hear from Mr. Chulip.
We have actually done research on this. You asked about the modelling, we've done the modelling.
Well, I want to ask Mr. Brooks, it was his evidence, Mr. Chulip, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
I'm interested in this information that you've provided to the committee that is Australian wide and it doesn't relate to Victoria, and we know. And you say that this is a supply issue. I'm just fascinated why you don't think that these pressures have any impact on demand and how it hasn't kept up with the production. And you also talk about production, production issues. We heard from the previous witnesses that there are huge concerns around taxes, regulation, and a whole range of things that developers can't possibly think. So, why have you not included that into the demands issues into your submission?
Which part of that, sorry?
All of that, you know, the labour, the developers, we can't keep up with producing these homes.
On the matter of immigration, Australia has been a country with relatively high immigration levels.
Not a million over the last two years, that is a big number, they've got to be housed somewhere.
Immigrants are able to contribute to the building of construction.
I'm not disputing any of that.
Ms. Crozier.
I'm not disputing any of that.
We're not having a debate, we're over time, so.
Well, I'll try to answer any of the questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Bachelor.
Thanks, Chair. My colleague, Ms. Crozier, has tried to lay the blame for the housing crisis at the hands of immigrants.
No. Chair, point of order, I'm not blaming because of immigrants, I'm blaming the demand and the issue around the numbers, the failure to manage those huge numbers. So, I'd ask you to ask the member to withdraw that comment.
Mr. Bachelor, would you like to refocus?
Mr. Chulip, do you have anything you'd like to add to Ms. Crozier's connection of immigration to housing supply and the costs of housing in this country?
I'd be delighted to. We've done substantial research on this question. We estimate that, yeah, I mean, my view is slightly different from James's. I think immigration has substantial and clear effects on housing prices, that we estimate, for example, I mean, just in a few days' time, we'll be voting in a federal election where the coalition has promised to reduce net overseas migration by about $100,000, 100,000 people a year. We estimate that over a decade, that that would reduce housing prices and rents by about, I think it's 11%. So, it's a significant effect. The debate over immigration is not, I don't think, over effectiveness, that we agree that the demand makes a difference, it's over desirability. And this is an issue on which there are difficult trade-offs, on which lots of people disagree. That immigration has all sorts of effects on the economy and society, and we'll have a federal election in just a few days' time to decide on those things. You guys in the Victorian Parliament don't get to decide on immigration, you get to decide on zoning.
I just want to go back, just given I've got limited time. Mr. Brooks, you talked about, your evidence at the core is about the relationship between labour productivity and housing construction, and the role of planning plays in that. Just so I can be clear, my understanding of the evidence that you've given is that the effect of the planning changes that we're considering today is to create a system that allows for greater consistency of the type of supply. And that should lead, in your economic analysis, to larger scale development of medium and lower density, we're not talking about high-rise construction, particularly on the townhouse code, of the capacity of firms to be able to build more of the same type of houses at once, lowering productivity. Is that.
More dog boxes.
Is that a correct understanding of your evidence about the relationship between.
That's a good representation.
Labour productivity in the construction sector and planning?
Yes, yes, more consistency in this system with certainty for firms allows them to invest better and learn by doing, get better at the things that they are able to construct, and eventually scale up, meaning that they're able to undertake more construction projects with less uncertainty and risk in the system, which we would expect to lead to higher productivity in this sector, which in tangible terms means more houses for less inputs, meaning less labour, less construction materials costs, because they've got more productive, better at doing.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. MacArthur.
Oh, great. Now, Mr. Brooks, I note that both of you are from interstate, right?
Yes, just recently so.
Yes, great, you are. So, you're not actually familiar with what's happening in Victoria on the ground? You've given us examples of New Zealand and everywhere else, you're not comparing apples with apples, are you? Because in New Zealand, where we've cited all these fantastic results from plan, changing, changes to planning laws, did they have 15, 15 development taxes? Did they have the same number of regulations revolving around red, green, brown tape, et cetera, and restrictions? Did they have the same amount of government construction occurring in big build projects which have exponentially increased the cost of building, let alone the shortage of building supplies for builders? Did, was, are you comparing apples with apples? Did all those things take place in the examples you've given where changes to planning occurred?
So, I think, Peter may wish to expand a bit more on this.
No, I'm asking you.
But I think thankfully, our analysis and statistics has come far enough that we often don't need to compare apples to apples to understand the, what the likely actuality of a outcome of a policy is going to be. And there is more cities than just Auckland which are demonstrating the same result.
Did they all have the exact same situations that occurred here that produced the same results?
I'm not sure that they need to have the exact same situation for us to understand at the heart. I believe.
You can't compare them. Now, there are approximately 8,000 residential possibilities available in the CBD. There are already apartments vacant, and you're telling us that there's a shortage of housing. Why aren't these being taken up?
So, the role of vacancy, I mean, there's a lot of reasons people can keep their dwelling vacant, and it's not necessarily commensurate with how supply has panned out over, what is this, 50 years?
Oh, so you would be aware, though, if you have a vacant building, you're taxed heavily in this state. So, it's not, it's not, there's not much incentive to keep everything vacant. So, these properties are not actually even available for rent, but they're not even being bought. So, there is housing availability, nobody wants it. In one council alone, in one of these tall towers areas, there's over 600 developments that have been approved, that would equal about 1,200 housing options. They've got their permits, but there is no building going to market. Why? Because the costs of taxes, charges, regulations, and building constructions are so great in this state, nobody could afford to buy them. That's the problem that we've got in this state, but you're not addressing that.
I mean, I'm here to give evidence about the, the planning scheme amendments.
But the.
Should the inquiry wish to look at other factors that influence feasibility, I'd be happy to prepare some comments.
So, more permits doesn't equal more houses? More permits doesn't equal more houses?
Should I respond or?
I think we'll be right. Mrs. Watts.
Thank you, Chair. There's probably some remarks from our previous questions, Mr. Brooks, and I'm happy to give you a moment to clear the air on what came. Anything you wanted to say that was cut off earlier from our earlier speaker regarding vacancy rates and apartment living, and how that affects pricing? I'm interested to hear actually, because there's some sort of assumption that if we've got an empty building, that folks haven't got their own reasons for that, so can you just talk to me about that?
The, I mean, the existing amount of vacancies in Melbourne right now is not a good explainer as to what is affecting price and rent growth over time. And when we look at this trend, you know, from even 2000 to now with the amount of dwellings we've built and people, we look at the slowdown in productivity over time, you know, this is, these are relationships which are not easily explained by 6,000 or so vacancies within the CBD. People have reasons to leave their buildings vacant, and, you know, in Australia, you are able to do that, and we, you know, we, we, Melbourne is a jurisdiction which taxes that, recognising that we want people in homes. The broader question here is how to increase supply to bring housing back into a range which is more affordable for more people. And these are changes which look to address that.
Just told you, there are plenty of.
Excuse me, Chair, I'll ask for my time in peace and quiet, please, Chair.
Mrs. MacArthur, thank you.
Could I ask for Mr. Chulip if you had any contributions that you wanted to make with respect to vacancies and supply in the state before I go to my next question?
So, there are a lot of empty houses, there are a lot of empty rooms in our housing stock, and if anyone has proposals for dealing with that, I'd be very interested in it. But just the fact that there, these problems exist, there is excess supply in some cases, doesn't mean that you should stop building in other cases. There are lots of places where builders and developers are busting to build.
Yes.
And we don't allow them to do so. We should.
Yes. And the examples of other jurisdictions, is it fair to assume that other countries in the world have infrastructure projects that are being developed at the same time as housing, and that that is something that is worthy of some analysis and consideration when it comes to housing and housing supply?
Sure. I think there was a misinterpretation of the evidence on Auckland earlier.
Yes, please.
Auckland is a good, clear, interesting example, but it's not the only one. There are dozens and dozens of examples all around the world, varying in all sorts of different ways. In my, I mean, just to list a few, Lower Ha, Zurich, Minneapolis, Edmonton, Tokyo, Houston, Sao Paulo, all of these have studies specifically looking at the effects of zoning rep, liberalisation. It worked in all of those places, why would it not work in Melbourne?
Lovely, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. MacArthur.
We've got a couple of minutes left, so a couple of very quick questions and from the witnesses blissfully quick answers. Mr. Davis.
Very quickly, separate from the planning matter, that's obviously only one factor in supply, but there is a range of taxes that are landed on properties here, about 15 or 16 new ones over the last 10 years, but in some cases, up to 50% of the value of a newly completed apartment or home is tax. Wouldn't the high taxation rate be a significant break on construction and the bringing forward of new volume of housing?
So, taxes naturally impact the feasibility of projects, but in this case, how it's different is we get something out of taxes, whether that's through a tax on development or through consolidated revenue.
Maybe, maybe.
The difference is with uncertainty and the level of specificity in the planning system is it's not clear what we're getting out of.
But just specifically, but just specifically on my question, the tax, the higher taxes will actually reduce the number of properties coming to market in a simple supply and demand way.
Within, before and after the implementation of these planning codes?
Either before or after the high tax rate will suppress the number.
Taxes ultimately do impact feasibility.
All right, thanks. Ms. Menzil.
It took a while to get there.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Mr. Chulip, you mentioned, you referred to this concept of, I guess, we've heard it called moving chains or filtering, where increasing supply makes housing more affordable right through, you know, through the full spectrum of housing. And you cited, you know, a range of different evidence to support that idea. Some of the research that's been done in Australia has shown that particularly for the very low income earners, that increasing supply in markets like Sydney and Melbourne hasn't actually been able to deliver more affordable housing for those people who are at that very low end of the, of the housing market. Some of the explanations put forward are that, you know, increasing supply alone isn't enough to deliver housing for those, for people on that very low, on very low incomes. How do you respond to that?
That, those results go against the overwhelming thrust of the research on this question. Overwhelmingly, we find that if you increase the supply of housing, it's of most benefit to people at the bottom rungs of the housing ladder. The, even most clearly for the homeless, that you increase housing supply, you reduce the level of homelessness. I mean, the chart in front of you that we supplied for Auckland, we can see that the big increase in supply in Auckland was of most benefit to low income earners. There's just a very large amount of research that says people on the lowest rungs are those that benefit most from increased housing supply.
So, you'd say that evidence from Australia, that those papers that say that that hasn't been the case in Australia, where supply has been increasing, exceeding population growth, and we haven't seen improvements in homelessness and housing affordability for low income earners, you'd say that that, perhaps that research is not correct?
Which particular paper are you referring to?
There is.
Is that the E61?
There was a paper that was published in, by Hury.
Okay. So, Hury, I think, produced low quality research on this question, and in particular, the big paper, I think, was by Nigard or others. It just doesn't refer to any of the other research on this topic. So, we can't see why they get these unusual results and how they're different.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Watts, one last question.
One last question, just going to worker housing now, is there any evidence that you wanted to have us consider with respect to key worker and key workers and the housing needs of key workers with respect to infill and availability to transport and public infrastructure and other things? I'm just considering that with respect to our future witnesses.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to raise any evidence which isn't already put forward in submissions. It's quite clear that increasing densities in well-located areas and transport is ultimately good, going to be good for key workers, and, you know, typically we're talking, I believe, middle income-ish.
Middle income, not low income.
The ability for the market to sort of get rents to a more affordable level for the, level for these income groups is pretty clear, looking at international events. And a comment on sort of the low income groups, you know, the government in provision of social housing still has to often comply with and follow the planning codes, and is still subject to how constructively we can produce housing, as it is with spot purchasing dwellings for people. So, there is another mechanism there in which we can see low income groups better off under these reforms.
Okay, we're going to leave it there. Um, could I thank both of the witnesses for attending today? Appreciate it was on very short time, so we, uh, we really do appreciate you making the time to contribute today. Uh, I just note that you'll receive a copy of the transcript for review before it's published on the website. Uh, and the committee will take a short break, uh, while we're reset for the next witnesses, who are from the Victorian Trades Hall Council. Thank you.